I'll call the council back into session. We've already convened our meeting at 5:00. It took a recess to allow you to come in. And I'll allow Chairman Davey Smith to call the Housing Authority meeting to order.
Call to order.
And we'll take your role.
Your role, yes, sir. We'll call Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Washington.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Yeah.
Commissioner Longe.
Here.
Vice Chairman Chapman.
Here.
And myself, Davey Smith here.
We do have an agenda. We have like the other day agenda plates.
Yes, please. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. This evening's presentations are the result of the city manager staff and PRHA staff collaborating, meeting last week, and determining the presentations and discussion items for this evening's joint meeting. As a result of these presentations by our staff, there are opportunities for both the Authority and council to bring up any issues that they would like to. The initial transfer of the 19 identified properties to the Economic Development Authority will be reviewed by Mr. Robert Moore, our Economic Development Director, followed by the initiatives of transfers of 20 additional properties to the city, also by Mr. Robert Moore. And then the Parkview Lots, PRHA, Mrs. Elisa Winston, will make the presentation. And the Craddock, non-CDBG lots, PRHA, Mrs. Winston will do the same. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. This is the Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as well as members of the Redevelopment Housing Authority Board. Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I want to briefly discuss the transfer of the property from PRHA to our Economic Development Authority. That property has transferred, but I want to take a moment to have a brief history of where we, how we got to this point today. Over the last several years, Economic Development staff, as well as planning staff, along with PRHA staff, have been working on a list of properties that were purchased via CDBG funding and looking at the use and utilization of those properties. Those properties started off as a list of over 100 properties, and we basically took those properties down to about three lists. Those lists were as follows. First, non-residential properties that were, we consider, developable. Then residential properties that we consider developable. And then the final list was basically, who wants these? A list of properties that neither the EDA or the PRHA staff saw as a viable option for either group, and we're trying to determine how we dispose of those properties. Again, tonight, we will talk about the properties that we have received from the EDA. The properties that we are set to receive is a total of 39 properties. It covers about nine acres and it, over several different areas of the city, primarily in the High Street corridor. Again, just kind of looking at the overview, we've discussed back in probably April, March, April, when we had a joint meeting with the EDA and City Council about the transfer of this land to the EDA. We have had subsequent conversations with the EDA. The parcels, again, total a number of 39. We have to date received 19. Those 19 parcels are about four acres. They cover seven areas in the city. Those 19 parcels are parcels that were readily available as far as transfers concerned. We have all the information necessary to transfer them via deeds. They have been done as of September 25th. We consider these 19 parcels, those that are immediately readily available to have some type of development happen. As a matter of fact, we are to point to, we have one particular company in the city of Portsmouth that is looking to do a multimillion dollar expansion, and it will include one of these parcels.
For the benefit of everybody, can you tell us about where 1020 High Street is?
I can do a little bit better than that. I can actually show you on a map.
I'm glad to ask.
Slightly ahead of me on the PowerPoint. However, and I'm hoping, I'm not blocking anyone here so that they can see. You have, this is 1020 High Street, which is the former Oasis. And I'll talk about why these parcels are important. Directly across the street is 1021 High Street, which is what the former Mary Jane property that the EDA owns. We also have, this should be 1100 High Street, but Primrose Street, again, kind of adjacent to this property. We also own 1130 High Street, which was the former Evans Electric property. 602 Fifth Street is a parcel that is a great size and just over two and a half acres of light industrial property, certainly very valuable to us in a city that is, for the most part, built out. Any type of land that we can acquire of this size is a good find. This is the property on High Street and Effingham Street. This is 818 County Street, to kind of familiarize with where you are. This is the Myers and Tobackin Building. These are the parcels adjacent to it. Again, when we look at London Boulevard, this is Evans Electric. This is the former Rite Aid. This is the property adjacent to it, some additional property across the street. 1500 Block of High Street, just further down, that's the 1500 Block. We also have the 1500 Block here that the EDA currently holds. And then finally, 3002, 3006 Jeep Creek Boulevard. These properties, again, we see as properties that are right now ready to move when we bring these together or separately. More specifically, these properties here. But when we bring these together, we see these as value adds to the property we already have in, with the city, with EDA. As far as the additional 20 properties that we have, again, we had 39 that we saw coming to the EDA, 19 have been transferred. The additional 20 properties, which I think this will take us into bullet two on your CDBG property update, we are working still with PRHA staff to work through those deeds and work through that information. We anticipate having that sooner rather than later. It's just a matter of getting all the information necessary to transfer. We still anticipate all of those properties coming to the EDA, but there may be an opportunity for some of those properties to be utilized by the city. But again, all of those properties will come to the EDA, again, a total of 39 acres, 39 parcels, nine acres, several different areas throughout the city. And I stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions from either council or the Housing Authority?
Yes, sir.
We did discuss some citizens would be eligible of receiving some of those properties adjacent to their properties for development. Did anything happen with that?
So I believe that's going to be later on. This section of the area, of the discussion is about the development properties that the EDA is going to receive. There are some properties, and I think, I'd hate to say they fall on that list of what do we do with them.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
But, yes, sir. We're still in the process of talking and discussing those parcels, so, yes, sir.
Now, these properties that have been transferred, the 19.
Yes, sir.
They're unencumbered by the national objective. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No, that, we, they are still, and I'll lean to our planning director to talk about those, but they are not, they are still encumbered.
So their ultimate disposition has to meet the national standard.
Yes, sir.
That's applicable.
Mr. Ball, would you like to speak?
Be good for us to know collectively which ones are scot-free and which one are encumbered.
Good evening. Two options here. One would be meeting a national objective. The second one would be repaying HUD fair market value for the properties. If you did a business transaction, someone's purchasing property, there could be repayment back to HUD. As you know, that money circles its way back around and ends up back in the city's CDBG line of credit.
But the mere fact that the title's been transferred from one public entity to another does not pull the trigger.
Does not affect that.
So are all 19 covered by the national objectives?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a timetable involved?
Well, as we've indicated, many of these properties have been in the inventory for years. You know, the current HUD standard is you should not be holding property, you should be trying to, you know, convert it over. But I could not say that we have, you know, some deadline timeframe pushing on us from HUD, but we'd just like to move them, get them developed, obviously, as soon as possible to move that off the inventory.
And I know we've covered this, but I think it would be good for everybody to hear it again. Define fair market value.
Okay, and we use two ways to determine fair market value. We will allow the use of the city's assessment. That's one of the first ways we can do it. City assessed value becomes fair market value. The other acceptable means we're doing an appraisal, have a licensed certified appraisal done, and that can become the fair market value. So either one of those two.
Elizabeth.
I think it's important to note, when this presentation, this information was provided to the Economic Development Authority last week or the week before at our monthly meeting, the Authority was thrilled to see these properties, particularly those that are contiguous already to properties EDA already owns. Everybody is aware that Mr. Moore is pretty much disposed of all the EDA properties in one fashion or another, so this gives him additional inventory to sell. And he's obviously doing a very good job of it, so we hope that these 19 will be gone in short order before we're ready for the next 20.
Yes.
But it's, and we all know too, that EDA will now be paying the load to maintain all these properties, all the grass cutting and that kind of stuff. Look at Davey smiling. EDA will be paying all those bills going, on a go-forward basis on these properties because the, because of the type of properties they are, you can't use the CDBG money to do that.
Because of the strategic location of the old Mary Jane property, can you go over again the Oasis and then the property adjacent to the closed Rite Aid?
So I will go, I will briefly answer that question, just because as we go through our processes in economic development, there's some sensitive information that we don't want to share at this point, or we'd like to not share, if at all possible.
That's fine.
But if you're looking at, this is the...
My question is, the property to the east and west, they're still in private ownership?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Same owner or two different owners?
Two different owners.
Okay. That was really the nature of my question.
So we'll leave it at that.
All right. Can you go to the Rite Aid property?
Yes, sir.
And show where the old Rite Aid was? Who owns that?
That is a family out of Pennsylvania that owns that. Rite Aid was leasing from them. That is currently available. And then, of course, the EDA owns this property here, the majority of this property here. I think the only place that is not held is this property right here on the corner.
And although this may not be germane, that Curve Lot on the south side of Queen, is that a rail right of way?
It was, yes, sir.
It was, and that's been vacated?
Yes, sir.
Lisa?
Okay. Two questions. I don't know if this is something that we can ask or answer in this forum, but I'll ask anyway. Anyway, are any of these properties in the enterprise zone, hub zones, where it will be incentives that will be offered to developers?
Yes, they're all in the enterprise zone. They are, if I'm not mistaken, all in the hub zone. The enterprise zone would give them the financial incentives. Also, they are in the local incentive program area of the city. The entire city is now in the local incentive program for the EDA, so they're eligible for matching fund grants as far as facade improvements and interior build-out, depending if there is an existing building on the property.
And then my next question. I think back when I remember being on EDA as chairman, they mentioned Primrose. I think there was the area that was kind of congregation for homeless to hang out. They spoke about opening the street back up to London. Is that a possibility with these transfers?
I believe it. I don't want to say it's not a possibility. I do believe at some point there was a discussion to have it in the CIP to open up that area. I would, I would say that any development, we may want to look at the entire block for development. I'm just linking that up to council, but potentially looking at how these streets would interact with some type of development of the streets.
Can we play up to speed on the conversation that's taking place? There was a discussion, there was a discussion at one time, Lisa said, about closing Primrose, that block between Queen and London.
You mean opening.
Opening it, not closing.
Reopening.
That's what I meant to say. I apologize. Okay.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Wright can give you just a quick on that Primrose and the CIP.
Primrose.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, from the City Council, PRHA Board. There is a current CIP project for, to reconnect both Primrose and Haddon to London Boulevard. We're initial stages of design. We have some survey and some other information, so we'll get that underway.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just appreciate, and it was almost a year ago that, you know, we were bringing this on to the table, and we appreciate, obviously, the collaboration that's happening between EDA and PRHA now. You know, it's just amazing when we started taking a look at how many properties we did have, and when you started to look at them from a different standpoint, what's developable, what's not developable, what can be used for other uses, it really opened up our eyes. And then EDA coming forward like they have, it's really been a win-win for all, obviously, it's going to be a win for us, and obviously going to be a win for EDA, but more, more than anything else, it's going to be a win for the, win for the city. But having, having, you know, Lisa Lucas Burke, who brings that EDA experience to us also, it's just been great to have that, have that conversation at the table. So thank you.
Energy is great in here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. At this time, we'll ask Mrs. Winston to come forward, please, to speak with the council and the authority about Parkview and Parkview Lots and Craddock. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Happy noon evening. So several lots did not transfer over to the city that was in the Parkview neighborhood, as well as the Craddock neighborhood. And the reason being is that we were working with a developer to purchase those lots. And so the board approved the sale of the lots in Parkview to Pyramid Enterprises for the development of residential lots. As well as Craddock, the board approved the sale of the lots on Cushion Street to C&amp;W Enterprises. So they will be used for residential lots. And we haven't, we've executed a development option agreement with those developers as well.
Did you put any restrictions on the sale, the transfer of the land?
Now, the lots, well, the lots in Parkview are attached to the fair market value. Their appraisal's done with that lot. Now, typically with our development agreement, we allow them to take down two lots at a time, just to make sure that they have the capacity to build, that they move forward with the development, and that the lots just don't stay vacant. So they take down two or three, then we give them two or three more. They take down two, and they get, and so forth.
When they take down two, what's the deadline to start to finish?
They usually have about six months to complete the city, from the issuing of the builder permits to selling the lots.
And that's in your contract with the developer?
Yes, so that is in the development agreement with the developer.
And so you all feel confident that these two developers are going to put houses there?
Yes, yes, we feel confident. And we do have, you know, within a development agreement, it allows us the option to terminate that a contract if they're not moving as fast or as swiftly as we need them to be, or in accordance with their contract, then we can terminate the contract.
And the Craddock properties are the ones, you know, at least we've really taken a look at to make sure they're working with the, with the neighborhood, the Civic League. And also, it's within the, within the...
Historic District.
Historic District, too, that they're meeting, meeting all those restrictions also. So we're excited about it, that they're going to be able to perform. They've already got, they already have some development going on in Gillis.
Yes.
And it's beautiful homes, so it's not like, it's not like they're not familiar with the, with the area, and they're familiar with the residents. So I think it's great.
Don't have a question? Actually, she answered my question. I was going to ask what the remedy was if the deadlines weren't met.
Yes, that we can terminate the contract.
What's the total number with Parkview and the Craddock that's developable?
There were five lots in the Craddock neighborhood, and there were 18 lots in Parkview. Now, some of them, some re-subdivision of lot lines have to be done, so there may be two lots now, but we'll vacate the interior lot line, they would vacate the interior lot line to create one build of a lot.
Refresh our memory on Craddock. Were those five lots contiguous?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Bland?
Give an update on the, what for his housing complex that they're going up for tax credits for next year?
On Effingham?
Just on Effingham.
Oh, the Vota Group?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, 818 County Street. Okay. So we are still in agreement with the Vota Group for that property until May of 2019. They are, they did not receive the tax credits, so they're reevaluating their application to see if they can become competitive this go-round and maybe possibly see the tax, receive the tax credits for that development. Now, they do have until January to provide an earnest money deposit in January if they want us to continue to extend that contract into May of 2019. So I suspect in January of 2019, we will know if that project moved forward or not. They will not pay the deposit if they're not going to move forward, because it's a substantial amount of money to do so.
In your opinion, and this may be an unfair question, but in your opinion, can they overcome what they need to do, the deficiency in their application?
I just think with this particular round, there were some strong applications, so it's very competitive, you know, round of tax credits. So do I think they could do something differently? You mean to become competitive next year? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
It just depends what applications are coming in. You know, you have, you know, folks throughout the state competing for, you know, these applications, so it depends on how strong the projects are in Norfolk or Chesapeake, you know. So it's just hard to say, you know, if they will get funded.
So it was more the competition rather than their deficiency?
Correct.
Sure. All right. Any other questions on that? Davey?
Sir, I'm just glad that we're all moving forward.
Yeah, we are.
All right.
But we have completed the items that's on the agenda for tonight from both the staff of PRHA and the city, and then we'll try to touch upon everything that we thought council or the authority would want an update on, so it's now up for you all to discuss or bring up anything you all would like.
Okay.
My question for Mr. Bland or whomever. If, let's fast forward to January 30th. If Vota doesn't pay their earnest money deposit because they haven't gotten their funding, then, then tell me what happens with that property?
Well, I can't speak for the board, but we will reach back out to Robert, because it is in the footprint of what you want to do downtown, so we'll reach out to Robert.
That's the answer I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lisa?
Ross mentioned at the last PRHA meeting that he wanted to add an additional item to the agenda, and Dr. Patton, I forgot to reach out to you. And then I saw CDBG, and I got mixed up with GPDC, and thought that it was on there. So Ross, during the meeting, wanted some updates on GPDC, and I, if we're not prepared to...
GPDC?
Yes, GPDC, yes.
Just to give a little bit of background, obviously, you know, GPDC has gone through some tough items in the last several years, and I was very excited to hear that we were back together, and both this, the city and the EDA and PRHA were back to meeting on a regular basis. And so the basic question was really just kind of what the expectation of the city was and how best the Housing Authority could react with that in order to make that entity successful again.
It got stood up last year, and each of the shareholders of GPDC, because it's a private, not-for-profit corporation, has two members. I and Dr. Patton represent the city. Davey Smith and Mr. Bland represent PRHA. And then the partnership is represented by David Tench and Ross Cherry, who is their newest appointment. And the, we've been, GPDC has been meeting on a very routine basis to move, to get first a feel for the development potential, which we think is great for the biggest parcel that GPDC owns, and that's the Old Holiday Insight, to make sure that we understand the market. When, the last time that this was offered, it was done through an RFP process, and every developer that we've talked to said, if you put it out for RFP, we're not going to, we're not interested. RFPs don't not work anymore, not since the Great Recession. So it's a process of trying to make sure that we get the right development team, and we haven't found that yet for that one site. How long's that site been vacant now? Twelve, twelve or more years? Let's, let's hope they've found the right something. Because that's, that's been off the tax rolls for a long time. I think we need to face the reality that in order for any type of urban development to take place in any city, there's going to be a need for public participation. And that was true when we put it out for RFP. The order magnitude, Ray was on that selection committee, was very significant. I mean, looking at order magnitude of $30 million worth of public participation, parking's going to be a requirement on that lot. We got a huge parking garage that is worthless. It is deteriorating. It's non-functional beyond the first floor. If you have a modern SUV or truck, you can't get beyond, and so that's going to have to come down. And a developer's going to look at us, that's a collective of us, but look at council and say, the numbers don't work unless you replace that structure. And you can do the math. You take the number of spaces times the price per space, and garage space starts at 20,000, just pick a round number, and go up to 40,000 or more, depending on how the garage is designed. So if you, Ray?
And one of the biggest obstacle, which was a part of the agreement, was the public participation. We ran into a number of different issues with the restrictions that were laid out, one of them being participation had to be, you know, Portsmouth, from Portsmouth, that was an issue. And then also, depending on who the financing entity is, they have their own restrictions, they have their own requirements, their own limitations as to the amount of investment that qualified for participation. So that's something that has to be looked at each, each time, depending on the participants.
Are those restrictions still in place?
No. No, I think...
They were tied to that RFP.
It was just for that.
For that.
So that would have to be worked out again all over.
And as we have these, and these are informal discussions, when we have the discussions, we sit down with the developer and say, what do you think? What do you think the potential is? What's your vision? And then we brought the marina folks in, too. Both that marina, Tywhar Yacht and Ocean Marina, are owned by the same company that owns marinas throughout the country. And they're willing to put money into it if they see a return on their investment. They're willing to upgrade if they can get their money back, and that's a big if. You know, what do we want to be as a port? Do we want to be like Newport, Rhode Island, which gets a lot of ocean yacht traffic? But when you think about coming down the east coast or going up the east coast and then turning in to the Chesapeake Bay, going through the Hampton Roads, and then going south on the Elizabeth River, it's a big detour. And so there's got to be some reason to do that, some attraction. So we're having these discussions, and we had a discussion as late as, I was going to say last week, but it was the week before.
Week before that.
Week before that.
So it's not that it's, GPDC is not doing anything, it is, but the market's a totally different market. This sounds like hyperbole, but it's not. Norfolk, $100 million into the main, I mean, one hotel in order to get that hotel. And then think about the development that's taking place at the beach. When the Hilton Hotel went at the beach, the city paid for that parking garage and the crosswalk. Now, you might ask, because that hotel just recently got sold, where's the equity in that? I mean, not equity like money, where's the equality in that, you know? Well, the thing is, is that that's a happening place at the beach because of that hotel, that parking garage, and that little park right there during the summer, it looks like a beehive. So, the bottom line is, is that we've got to face the reality, if we want this property to be developed, once we find the right developer, it's going to take an investment on the part of the city. And then we have to determine whether or not it's worth that investment, what that return's going to be. We have three other members of the GPDC board here, and I didn't mean to do all the talking, but you all, I've been watching your heads and you were doing like this.
I think you said it on my behalf well, Mayor.
And let me just add, what the mayor's saying, if you look all across the country, your local municipality is going to have to make an investment in what takes place down there. You're not going to get a developer who's going to come in and just put all the money into it. They're going to be looking for something financially in order to make it work. And as the mayor said, that's going to be the reality that the council here would have to face, is that it's going to have to be a partnership.
Has the property been marketed, as we sit here? Well, again, we have talked with developers within the region, within the state, and out of the state. And so it's just going down a list of looking at who's got the financial capacity. I mean, we could advertise all day long in the New York Times or, you know, but you're not going to get that. You've got, you've got to reach out and get the developer here on site, the developer that we met with last, we actually took him up in the Harbor Towers and looked down on the property. And so it's going to take that type of face-to-face, and that's what Robert Moore does every day, is face-to-face stuff. So Robert's been involved in this. Do we get many inquiries on it? I mean, we're still talking about over a decade of being vacant. I know before the Great Recession hit, there was really a wonderful project, at least on paper, and then once the recession hit, they wanted to change it to a stick-type project, and we wisely passed on it. But I would think at least we'd be getting inquiries either within the region or even out of the region. We have contacted most of the developers that one might think in the region that would, you would anticipate getting an inquiry from. But the reality, I mean, I am just as impatient as you are, but look at, look at the site that MacArthur Mall sits on. That site was vacant in 1971, and it stayed vacant through the decade of the '70s, the decade of the '80s, and the '90s. But the Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, in partnership with the city, set on that property, waiting for the right time. Instead of selling off a parcel here and a parcel there, they kept it in one aggregate so that they had a piece of land that they control and could make it work. And the money, and the city put money in that project too.
Put 50 million in the parking garage.
So it's, and I share your impatience, but I think, and it was explained once, it's got to be proven that a developer that has a good reputation of getting things done can make money in Portsmouth, can get a return on their investment.
That's it.
And you've got to prove that to the developer. You've got to make the work, the numbers work for the developer.
Are there any incentives to attract any of the developers available or that we can create?
Well, the incentives would be infrastructure, both onsite and offsite. We're taking care of the offsite infrastructure because prior to the downtown revitalization of our water sewer, stormwater, you couldn't really put anything there because you couldn't get the fire flows there. And so that's being done, and that's being done, that's going to be an unintended consequence that, a good one, that because of the work that we're doing downtown, that site's going to be prepared for water and sewer. It'll have the water capacity to do that. We're repairing the seawall. That seawall down there needs to get repaired, and that seawall, and Dr. Patton, you need to correct me, has riprap on the outboard side.
Yes.
Which makes that difficult.
Right.
You know, it makes it more expensive. We haven't had that in the other part, so you've got to, you've got to dig that stuff up.
Out.
The ideal thing would be, okay, we'll go out five more feet, we'll go to the toe of the riprap. The Coast Guard will say, you're crazy.
You're crazy.
We're not going to let you do that.
Right.
We want that channel to be big.
Just a second there, Mayor. I believe some other things out there, councilwoman, like tourism grants, and there's a lot of other incentives, and I believe you can back up on this stuff, right, new market tax credits, things like that come up when you think about this project of this magnitude. Because I know they did that with the Cavalier. They got some tourism grants and got funding for the actual project. So, those are some things that come to mind when you say incentives as well.
Right.
Yeah.
And we are hoping to have the phase of the seawall, which we are currently, as you look out every day, you're seeing more and more of the concrete, to be opened by the end of December or first of January, and then we're ready to move to the last piece, which the mayor has just spoke of, which will take us some time. But we would have redone our entire seawall.
And I'm going to throw this out there because I think we need to put it on the table. We all got excited, and we told Dr. Patton, we wanted in our first retreat to bring back Portside. She saluted smartly and moved out quickly to get it done. We've got a grant from the Port Authority to get it done, and construction's on the way. What are we going to do if a developer comes and says, I need that six acres right there, that whole Holiday Inn site, I need your visitor center, and guess what, I need the Portside. Now, are we going to be stuck because we just put a half a million dollars into Portside? At what time do we need to discuss that? Do we need to slow down on that? You know, I get questions like just about everybody here around the table, when does Portside coming back? I'll say, end of the summer, or end of the year, or whatever.
And, Mayor, we also, we also must say that we have had a plethora of citizens who have said they want to stay at the foot of High Street, and that's what they liked, the High Street Landing, which it was built for, to sit around the amphitheater steps. Mrs. Simmons is shaking her head, and that was the Gendreau vision, but we didn't get to see that real vision until this year, when we started the work down there. And then when we look at the Stormwater Park, where you've seen the three renderings, where that entire corridor will be brick pavers where you can walk up and down with no traffic, you know, there's just so much opportunity for us to consider what lies ahead for how it will evolve to our downtown area.
Yeah.
Our waterfront.
Think about, first, the optics of this. If we get a developer that says, okay, I'm partnering with you, you put money into it, you do the parking garage, you do the this, that, and the other, but in order to make this work, I need the Portside site. And let's say it ends up being, on the private sector side, $100 million project. Are we going to tear down a brand-new facility for a $100 million project? There are going to be citizens who would say, that's pretty stupid.
$100 million for $700,000.
Yeah, it's like buying a new car, then for the fun of it, just crashing it.
Well, in my opinion, number one, the elephant here is that we don't have a lot of money to put up, you know, like other cities. So we're going to have to be, I mean, but we're going to have to be flexible. And I would say it's going to depend on how much that developer, how bad he wants it. If the developer wants it bad enough, then he's going to have to add it up. And whether or not we can, you know, help him in any way, that's why we, we often talked even before council, when I was on, about a war chest, about putting money aside...
We're already talking about...
To do something like that, to make an enticement. Because we often talk about $40 million we put in the Renaissance, and everybody says, well, we don't want to do that again.
No, but look what the Renaissance...
We might have to, you know, if we want to attract, if it's long-term, if it's going to, you know, give it back to us. We can't just let, what, the Renaissance hold us back from entertaining, you know, a developer who has money to bring and we can see a return. Times are different now, and I think we tend to get stuck in a time warp because of the past.
And to pick up on what you said, Ray, since the '80s, to do an urban hotel, what used to be 50%, I mean, 50% of the total cost had to be done by somebody other than the developer. And when it happened in Portsmouth, it was like we just discovered fire, you know, oh my gosh, what had been happening all over the country and in Virginia. The Suffolk Hilton Garden Inn is the same way. When you walk in the door, the kitchen is owned by the, by the city, the dining room is owned by the city, the ballroom is owned by the city. The person walking and going to a event doesn't realize that, just like at the Renaissance. But that's the nature of doing an urban hotel, you've got to put money in it. Well, the reality, though, is, what are we looking at in the next 10 years, projected debt leeway? Was it 67 million?
That was CIP, in the CIP.
Well, wherever. I mean, we, we don't have the capacity that we had back when the Renaissance deal was structured, I don't think.
I would say, Mr. Moody, you know, debt capacity changes, those were figures that was with us in, with our last budget when we were looking at the CIP, what our capacity was. But we know the CIP is ever-evolving, we'll be beginning work already on the 19 through 24.
That evolves, but...
But we'll, we'll...
It all depends on what the developers are asking for.
We would have better figures during the budget process to talk about.
Of public equity.
We need cash, we need cash. We don't need to be trying to figure out how to get in the more debt. We need to accumulate cash.
That is a great, great point, and we're bombarded with requests for cash. Give me this, give me that. And when we do that, we, when we, I don't want to say succumb, but I'll say that, then that just diminishes our capacity to use that cash for economic development. I think this has been a good discussion because your question was essentially, is GPDC active? It's very active, and you've got two-thirds of the board here. This is not a GPDC meeting.
No.
No, we didn't think about that.
But it's, the conversation evolved to the reality that, you know, we may have this great champagne dream, but we might only be able to afford the 69 cent tonic water.
No, we got to have champagne.
I hope also, what's happened in the past, there were, let me word it, individuals that blocked because we, and Davey can, he knows, he can attest to this, we've had some, some significant folks that were interested in investing in the city, and they were practically run away, you know, some non-conventional-type proposals of $100 million, even, even with the Holiday Inn project, that was one that was run out of town. But, but he was asking a little much, you know, but, but it wasn't really entertained because the mindset was like, where are you going to get it from? Prove it, how are you going to do it? You know, fed at the table, rather than taking some time to vet the individual. And I hope we've passed that.
We are.
And I think, looking behind you over there, I know he's...
Who are you looking at? Oh, Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
You're looking at, okay, yeah, we're beyond that.
He's open.
Right.
Your question's like the George Washington Bridge in New York. It has a top lane and a bottom lane. The top lane for GPDC, you know, we're way past that.
Yes.
We want to sit you at the table, we're going to ask you a thousand questions, but we're not going to, not close the door in your face. And then the next, well, the next set of lanes, as Dr. Patton says, it's the new Portsmouth.
It is. I mean, people are interested, never before. And I just say this, we have had, since the presentation of the Mr. Shamir and the Renaissance, I can't tell you how many citizens that watch Channel 48 and are so excited and ask the questions, are they truly going to put an 11 or more million dollars in renovating our hotel? Because we, you know, we have the mind, nobody will never do it. And here, as Mr. Shamir said, and just having some other city managers to mention to me, that we're going to be a beacon to come from across the water to this hotel because it's going to be cutting edge.
Yeah.
We're getting there.
Good discussion. What else do we need?
Sir, just maybe not so much to flush it out here, but we're excited about the teardown of Lincoln and renovating that into, in fact, even shining a light and changing the name to Lexington. And we've already pumped some additional dollars in there for, to move out on that, and just, at some point, be able to sit down and see, what is the city going to do with the adjacent properties around there? Because these are going to be, these are going to be really world-class, national-class housing that we're going to put there that we haven't seen before in this area. And we want to make sure we're projecting, from a public housing standpoint, projecting with collaboration with what the city's doing for that area around there where Lincoln Park is right now.
Well, that's a good point. Can we, as a body, ask our two CEOs to have their staffs work together to come up and collaborate?
Absolutely, sir.
A plan that involves not only the housing of the authority property, but the adjacent property. Can you put that on your list?
Yes, it's on our agenda at our last meeting, when we meet last week.
Last week.
Mr. Moore.
We talked, we began discussing last week and referenced to that, to that around there.
They're way ahead of us.
Right, we are.
Right. I know a question came up to us, what's the future for Swanson Home, because it's in a floodplain. So our goal is, eventually in the next two to three years, hopefully, we can give relocation vouchers for the families for Swanson to move them out, and the city have, has some interest in making that into a...
Stormwater park?
Stormwater park because of where it's located at. And they want to talk a little bit about that.
Dr. Patton?
In our meeting, Mr. Bland asked that question, and when he said that they could begin to move citizens out, I was thinking that, okay, I'm leaving today, can I just keep closing down, closing down? But he said they cannot do that because they received the three-point-something-million-dollar grant to do the upgrades as a result of the storm, was it a storm that, it was heavy rain or...
Matthew.
Matthew, okay, the rains from Matthew. So that they cannot, with great acceleration, do that, they have to take overtime. So this property's not going to be coming available up until maybe the next three to five years as they begin to phase out. What the team, the staff, Mr. Baldwin was in the meeting, indicated that we can get credits for our stormwater if, in fact, we know it's a flood-prone area to develop further, what do you call it?
Stormwater park?
It's a stormwater management.
Stormwater management area, that you wouldn't build anything there because we're going to have the same issues as before. So we are working on that and discussing it in depth.
Yes, sir.
How many residents, do y'all know? How many residents do y'all know?
I mean, residents.
Out there now.
It's close to two hundred units there.
And so we, we'll be able to relocate them?
Yeah, we, somewhere in the future, we, we can probably get relocation vouchers that they can use, with voucher, they can use it in the city of Portsmouth or they may can go anywhere in the United States with that voucher. Some families will probably stay in the area, similar to what they're doing over in Norfolk, some will stay in the area, some may relocate within Virginia or go outside of the state. But once the city have the, have the study done for the stormwater park, then we can use that to, to reach out to HUD saying that the city can use for best use instead of what we have it presented for. So the Housing Authority, we will work, once the city get the study done, then we, what we will do is then submit an application to HUD for demolition and relocation vouchers.
You know, that's gonna be touchy, you know? I guess this will be tele-broadcast and proper notifications and I hope we're prepared to really work with them and not try to blow through and really, really make a concerted effort to try to help in any way we can. Because we, it, it will be too costly to try to, the only thing that you could do as far as the housing over there is to elevate. All of that's flat on slabs and that would be astronomical to, to try to do anything to remediate flood in that area over there. So, but, but we need to do all we can to make sure that the residents, you know, do have someplace to go.
Yes, sir. And two hundred and ten units represents probably about eighteen percent of our total, total units that we have available to us. But we can assure you, you know, we're doing everything we can for the residents to make it comfortable now. We just had, we just renovated the community center out there. We've got a lot of family, family sufficiency support out there. But yes, sir, Swanson, as we all know, those of us who've been around for a long time, we really want to do it right for those folks out there. And after Matthew hit, it was a tremendous effort that the city and PRH did to go in there. But we, we definitely have to look towards the future. And the future's gotta, we're gonna take care of those folks and yes, sir, a lot of communications.
That's it?
This has been a very good.
Here's another item there.
The other item that Commissioner asked, the poverty study that the city have, have gone on, what role would the Housing Authority play into that? And we was kind of told that probably in 2019, the consultant firm would be reaching out, going into some of our public housing community and getting feedback from our families to see what they were, what they, what they want as part of that study. So we're looking forward to working with the city in 2019 for the poverty study that they're, they're, they have commanded to start.
And the consultants will be actually there in town when, Mr.?
We're on the study for them.
Right. We are looking for them to come back sometime in November. And when they come back in November, one of the things we've found and I've shared with you is that we have had some of the community outreach, but actually the persons who are experiencing levels of poverty have not come. So what has happened is the discussion is that we're gonna have to go into areas, go into, as Mr. Bland said, he would welcome having some sessions into their communities and actually engaging. And I shared with you that the, the Lincoln, not Lincoln Park, but London Oaks community has asked that they come out and do some sessions there and actually talk with some of the citizens out there. So the next phase of that, we will be developing. And by the time of our city council retreat, the first and second of February, there will be some work that council will do in actually setting up the groups and the marshaling of areas for the next phase of our study. Okay?
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you for taking time on a Monday evening to meet with us.
With a good agenda.
Just speaking for myself, I, I think this has been a good.
Agenda, yeah.
And we have more business tonight?
Yes, you have five presentations.
Welcome to stay.
Show yourself, sir.
Big journey, meeting.
A journey.
Means a journey.
Have a good night.
Take a three-minute, a five-minute recess. We're back in session. Meeting back to order. Dr. Patton.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, this evening's first presentation, Mr. Peter Schleck, Executive Director of the Portsmouth Museums Foundation, and Ms. Nancy Perry, Director of Museums, will present the refurbishing plans for the upcoming fortieth anniversary of the Children's Museum of Virginia. The museum has been open seven and a half years since its last renovation, and it is time to refresh, refurbish, and replace some of the exhibits. Mr. Schleck will discuss the upcoming capital campaign and Mrs. Perry will highlight the concepts for the exhibits. It is time, it is the time of year, and this is, I'm going to my second presentation that's gonna come up. It's the time of year our city hosts an open enrollment period for health insurance coverage. During our second presentation, Ms. Elizabeth Gutten, Director of Human Resource Management, will provide an overview of the city's health insurance options for the open enrollment for city employees and retirees. One of the top financial drivers of the city's budget is healthcare insurance, which is offered to city employees and retirees. As we continue to foster a culture of workplace wellness, tonight's presentation will include an overview of the city's wellness initiatives and propose new programs to help improve the health of city employees and their dependents. The open enrollment period is October twenty-ninth through November ninth. The third presentation, Mr. Daniel Jones, Chief Information Officer, will provide a brief update on the PCBN proposal review scheduling. These proposal reviews will allow vendors the opportunity to present their proposals and to review the committee to ascertain recommended proposals for contract award. And lastly, Mr. Baldwin will briefly discuss the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan One issue, which City Council will have time to give some thought before the decision is made for the public hearing on November thirteenth. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, two promises to you. One, I'll be concise, and two, I won't ask you for a dollar. So unlike developers and others who come before you, other than the CIP money and the operating budget, the foundation will take care of this one. Everyone agrees that the Children's Museum is really a jewel in the crown of Portsmouth and their plan's underway to buff it up, shine it up, and make it brighter than ever. So we're really excited about that. Dr. Patton said, I'll be covering who we are and what we're doing in terms of raising money, and then Ms. Perry will be talking about the conceptual design that we'll be bringing to the museum. Portsmouth Museums Foundation is twenty-six years old. We were established in nineteen ninety-two by Senator Spong in conjunction with the relocation of the museum to the current site that it's at from the courthouse. So we've been around a while. We've raised over ten million dollars in private support for the museums over the years. The campaign will be tagged with the fortieth anniversary of the museum. It was established, as many of you know, in nineteen eighty as a project of the Portsmouth Service League and started out and is now the public library. So that's kind of be our buzz, you know, it's forty years, let's get excited about the museum, let's get it looking nice again. Really, the reasons, you know, the first bullet has two, two points to it, really. In the seven years since we reopened in May of twenty-eleven, over a million people have gone through that museum and most of them are gonna be fourth graders and younger. So it's taken a bit of a beating. If you've taken a real close look, staff does a wonderful job of keeping it nice, but it simply has had, the life expectancy of an exhibit in a children's museum is about seven years. So really, it looks remarkably good. The second thing is, it's kind of, it's been static. It hasn't changed in seven years. It hasn't had a new exhibit. It hasn't had a reason to get parents and grandparents excited, bring kids in. So we think it's time. As Nancy will get into tastes in children's museums, and the very audience that visits a children's museum has changed over the last seven years. So we need to adjust with the times. We, as a board, were a private, independent, mother, one, two, three with a board, voted in January to take this on and launch a capital campaign and begin the conceptual design. We hired Lee H. Skolnick of New York City to be our exhibit designer. We like them for, for three reasons, really. Number one, they're the best at what they do in the country. They've been around for over thirty years. The creativity and the passion that they bring to projects is really outstanding. Two, the key principles involved have a background in education. So they come at this knowing all about Virginia's SOLs, they know about being in the classroom, they know how kids learn. So they're more than just showing us pretty things, they're showing us educational tools that we can use. And then finally, we like them because they know us. I'll get into that in just a little bit. Here's some sample of what they've done. The Children's Museum of Miami, a project much like ours, they had a major redo where they actually closed eight or nine years ago. Skolnick designed that and is now wrapping up. What we're planning to do is really a follow-up brush-up. So we're not gonna close the museum, we're gonna do it exhibit by exhibit on a rolling basis as funds become available from the campaign. Not only have they a national footprint, but they have a global footprint. This is a children's museum where they did the exhibits and also the architecture for the museum itself in Sofia, Bulgaria. But we like them best because this is their, we think, the best project they've ever done. They did the design, redesign of the children's museum, which began in May of twenty-eleven. So they know us, we know them. Most of the design team are the same people we worked with previously. Here's what the timeline looked at, looked like. We kicked off in April. The contract is between the Portsmouth Museums Foundation and Lee H. Skolnick, not between the city of Portsmouth. So we're taking on the financial risk here to get this done between funds that we have on hand and funds that will gather in the community. They came back to us at twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, and finally, in late September, presented the hundred, hundred percent conceptual design for the museum. And Ms. Perry will get into that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, once the Skolnick firm came on board, they spent two days in the exhibit areas, watching how visitors use the exhibits, talking with the visitors, and reviewing with the exhibit staff the condition of the exhibits. We then worked on our refocus goals, which was our target audience. When we first started designing and working on a master plan in two thousand and three, our audience, we're looking at an audience up to about nine or ten years old. In the ensuing years, the average audience for a children's museum is eight and below. Some areas they're finding it's four or five and below. We also are looking at STEM and STEAM learning, early literacy, Virginia SOLs, redefining our graphic system. We have a lot of words now and taking that out and using pictograms and things like that for the younger children to be able to, to gather information and to brand ondolo So they came to us with the four Rs, and not until they brought us the four Rs, and I looked at it and I said, oh, Dr. Patton will really like this. She has, she has the three Rs. And so it didn't come from the staff, it came from the exhibit designers. And so we refocused, which I've been over, and then we looked at what we needed to renovate, which would be the major upgrades, rethinking the interpretive focus, new activities, and rewriting the goals and objectives. Then there are areas we were going to replace. Some of them are underperforming activities or exhibits. We're aligning them with the refocus goals, we're maintaining interpretive focus. And then refurbishing are things that are smaller, things that the children's museum staff can do, the exhibit staff can do on their own without any further help from Skolnick or from an exhibit fabricator. So on the ground floor, the four major areas that we're changing out are Town Bank, Animal Rescue, Body Works, and the Thomas area, which is in a larger train section. The other areas, you'll see, there are certain things at the port and in safety zone, a few things that we're doing, some individual exhibit upgrades to, and then some minor renovations in other places, like the planetarium lobby, a few things in the bubbles area. On the second floor, we're making the most of the changes because when we designed the museum, the first floor was really for role play and the younger audience, and the second floor was designed for school groups and going up to the ages of, you know, eight, nine, and ten. And so as the audience has gone down, we found that many of the things, activities in that area are to, at a higher level than our, than our audience. We're looking at catch a wave, which is on sound and light waves, and we've been working with the science coordinator from Portsmouth Public Schools. Creativity, we worked with the supervisor, art supervisor from Portsmouth Public Schools and two art teachers to help us understand what younger children can do with art concepts and developing art. And my backyard is an area on the environment, which we'll still stay with that, but we're going to talk more about animals and animal habitats in our, in our area and in our region. Up, up and away is the hot air balloon. And while people like the hot air balloon, it's not interactive, the balloon goes up and down. And we wanted originally to have something visual that you could see from high street, but the atrium has a lot of solar gain. And so the hot air balloon, we have a problem with the material because of solar gain. And so we want to take that out. We're considering maybe putting some kind of filter on the windows that helps the solar gain and putting something there that still is visual at night from the street, but is not so affected by solar gain. The first area is Thomas. It's a popular area, and we are fast-tracking this. We would like to open with a reception on January twenty-fifth because we are also bringing in a major Thomas changing exhibit that will be in the changing gallery from January twenty-sixth, actually, until May. And so we thought it would be nice if we put these things together. And so this is on the fast track, and we just got the design development drawings on Friday for this. So there'd be activity around the train, it looks like it's coming out of the tunnel, and there's lots of, lots of things that kids can touch and move and do, and they'll be able to crawl in it. We've designed new layout for the Thomas, the train. Some will have stationary track for the younger kids, and some will have track for, that kids can make, or they can also make layouts on the floor. And then along the far wall, you'll see a, it's like little ramp that the kids can take trains up and around on the ramp, and we'll adding some scenic elements. Body Works is the next one that we're making major changes to right now. It's a dental and a pediatrician office, and we're changing it to healthy lifestyles.
Yes.
And so we'll have, we're expanding the exhibit a bit, and everything will be here on healthy lifestyles and the importance of exercise. The next is the, what we're calling Happy Paws. It's a pets and vets area now. We're leaving some of the things, refurbishing some of the things that are in there, but we're changing it from going to vet's visit to adoption and how to take care of pets that you adopt. The tree is actually a column, and we're making that into a place, we're adding birds right now. We mostly have cats and dogs, and we're adding birds. We're keeping the doghouse, and we're upgrading, where it says dog, cats, and now adding, adding birds. And we'll have some photo opportunities in there as well. Town Bank, we've worked, Town Bank on upgrades to Town Bank. While the exterior will stay the same, we're adding a Townie Bear for a photo opportunity. To the right of Townie Bear is an ATM machine that talks about careers now, and we'll be doing math exercise in there. The VW has.
Just spit out money?
Yeah. The VW is well-worn, so we're replacing it with another VW. Our themes in here are working to earn money, saving, and then philanthropy, always having something that you can give away to somebody else or some other organization. And those are the three principles from Town Bank with working, saving, and their philanthropy. We will continue, we'll upgrade the safety deposit box, and we're still keeping the teller window. We weren't sure about that. Most people don't go into a bank with a teller window, but it's very popular, and Town Bank likes that. And we'll be doing an activity in the floor where kids can step on it and a dollar becomes quarters, and quarters become dimes and nickels, and they can step on it and do math, math problems.
That's great.
My backyard and beyond. Did you want to go back?
I was wondering, can you do it so that a dollar becomes five dollars?
Right, no bear.
I don't know.
That's not how we gonna teach you. That would be great.
My backyard and beyond is on the second floor and is where the house is, and we talk about environmental issues. we talk about environmental issues. And then you go out, outside, and we wanted to really upgrade this area. We're keeping some of the elements, but we're talking more about animal habitats, animal tracks, how kids can, can track the animals throughout the exhibit. And we thought it would be fun to have a clubhouse.
Hmm.
Because kids love clubhouses, and that's where they collect things and have important things. And so we'll be building a kid's clubhouse. We were going to talk about collecting things in the center area, and we've decided to move that and do that in the clubhouse because that's where kids would have their, their collections. And so this exhibit, some things stay the same, but some things change as we talk more about animal habitats, animal lives, nocturnal animals in Portsmouth and in our region as well. And this will be more visual when you come up the steps. Right now, it's not quite as visual, and so we're adding a lot of scenic elements to this area. The biggest change is in creativity. We want to change the lighting, and working with the teachers was very interesting. They came back with a wonderful, wonderful suggestions and research behind it. And when Skolnick presented their ideas, it almost mirrored the teachers' ideas, and they never talked to each other. So it was really, it was really interesting. And so the, many of the things we have in there now are too difficult for the younger audience. And so we're really changing it up for the younger, the younger audience. We have a, what I call like a light bright. If you've seen those little things, it'll be a big one, and they can turn the lights. They will be a section on a magnetic wall where they can build and do things on a magnetic wall. We found these wonderful building blocks. We have an architecture section now, but there'll be these wonderful building blocks that they can build communities. We also are upgrading a bit the performance space and calling it what's playing today. Right now, we have slides, so you could change the scene in the back, and that's been, after all the use, they're kind of hanging in. So we will be doing that through a projection system that they can change up. We have thunder and lights and things like that now, but they'll also be able to change up the background through the, through the projection system. To the left are our existing classrooms, so those will stay there. And then the one that you can hardly see, we have a make and take area where kids can come in and do make and take art activities, and that will remain as well. We're trying to give this more focus when you come off the elevator. Right now, it's a little dark and a little blocked, and people aren't quite sure what's there. And so we're opening it up and making it lighter and brighter in that space. So we finished the design, and this are just a few of the elements that we've, I'm showing you tonight. So the concept design is completed. We're doing design development next. We're hoping that will be completed by the end of the summer, beginning of September. And then the designers will do fabrication documents. And as Mr. Schleck said, we will not be closing the museum and doing everything at once. This will be a phased project over a number of years, three, four, five years, depending on how sponsorships and funding come in. And so we'll close sections down as money is available, and then do the bidding negotiation and bring on a fabricator installation and open a section. And I like this concept. Miami's been doing this for five years because every year we have one or two really new things coming in that we can promote so that people can see the children's museum is not static, that it's always changing and moving forward. Any questions?
Exciting. Yes. The screen right before, under the bidding and negotiations step, who's bidding, who's negotiating?
The foundation would be, are paying for the exhibits, and so I'm assuming that they are bored and they're, they're legal.
The contracts will be between the Portsmouth Museums Foundation and Skolnick, and then the fabricator. And we're, we're blessed, really. The community has supported us well in this slightly down period where we haven't had as many expenditures since the big renovation that opened in 2011. So we've got considerable resources on hand to put into this before we even have to go to the market. We're not going to borrow money. We're going to go to the market when that money runs out and say, "We need this exhibit. It's going to cost $150,000. Will you sponsor it?" And we get that, we'll do it. That's how it's going to work.
Great. Very exciting.
Yes.
It is.
I was going to ask, is Lego taboo now around here?
No, we do a lot with Lego in our STEM studio. We have a, not outfitted STEM studio, but we do STEM studio program and have a STEM club, and we do a lot with Legos. They're very popular.
Yeah, it is.
And we also work with Pro Technologies, I think that's the name of it, and they do a lot of Lego activities for us.
So is any of that incorporated in it is?
Only in programming, not as far as a Lego exhibit, but in, in the programming that we do. And I think our long-range, big picture, which isn't here, we're not that far along, is to actually have a outfitted STEM studio where we would operate it on a more regular basis with programs and classes on STEM and STEAM.
Because I just mentioned that because I was recently, it used to be called Downtown Disney, now it's called Disney Springs. And the Lego, that is the most popular.
It is.
With my grandkids away from me, get them away. And it is just so many kids are just, just want to sit on the floor, they just want to stick stuff, there's tables.
Stick stuff.
All kinds of, they make ugly little things, all kinds of things, and it's very, very popular.
It is.
Most places that you go. There's even a Legoland down there in Florida.
And we do that in the, in the STEM studio. The staff is not always happy when I find ideas and bring them, bring them back because they're a gazillion pieces.
Yeah, it's messy.
You know, and it's like, "Oh, this is a great idea." But they, we do a lot of things with, with Legos and Lego building. And actually, this summer, we had a Lego camp.
One of the things I was going to mention, Mr. Smith, for the first time this holiday season, Lego has created a Lego series for adults. And these series, things will be animated, and if you have never been to Meg Pittinger's office, which most of you have not, and she's shaking her head, Meg Pittinger is an expert in Legos, and all throughout her office, she has towns and cities with lights and this and all kinds of things over the years. So when I came back here, and she continues to add to it, so if you have a moment, anytime, go down there and look at how she, she works on Legos, she said, all the time, it's her hobby. So adults are really getting into it, and they said it's very good that they're using it with people with dementia and Alzheimer's, they are finding an area there, so.
She's brought them over to the children's museum before.
She's got so many.
Yeah, I need to check that out.
Yes.
And they have a number-
Forget I remind you.
Lego has a number of traveling exhibits, but you need an outdoor space for them, and we don't have an outdoor space. But they're pretty spectacular. They were at the Botanical Gardens in, Blue's Ginder Botanical Gardens, and they were at the Living Museum. You don't have to buy them. Need the space to have these, secure space to have these big Lego figures and massive Lego blocks outside.
What is the anticipated total investment in this project?
I don't have that yet because we're just at conceptual. We know approximate what Thomas is going to cost, which we think it'll be about $168,000 because we're designing. But we've been monitoring and looking at things and saying, "Oh, no, we, we don't need 12 of these, we only need three of these." We've been very conscious about cost and think, what we think, but where the costs are.
We're not quite the tonic water yet, but we're not champagne.
You're trying to get there.
I could tell you the last project was $4 million just for the exhibits, this one will be smaller.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, members of council, we will have Ms. Sketten to come forward with the 2019 health and wellness programs.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight's presentation is going to focus on employees, and as we focus on our employees, we're focusing on them encouraging positive health behaviors as an important part of our health and wellness plan. There's going to be kind of two parts to our presentation. The first part, we'll talk about our health insurance programs. The city currently offers health insurance to all of our full-time employees and their dependents, as well as our retirees under the age of 65. We currently offer the following health insurance options. We offer medical, dental, and vision. We offer flexible spending accounts that include healthcare spending accounts and dependent care spending accounts. We offer a legal care plan, and we also offer a short-term disability plan, which is one of our voluntary benefits through Aflac. And we also still have our health reimbursement account, our HRAs, that's offered to our retirees over 65. That would be those individuals that when we moved away from offering healthcare to our retirees that were eligible for Medicare, we actually offered them a HRA account, and the current funding level is still at $1,400 as indicated by council. Some of our enrollment, just to give you a little bit of ideas, our active enrollment in our active HMO is about 1,208. Our PPO plan, there's about 91. Our retiree HMO, there's about 153, and our retiree PPO, it's about 16. For fiscal year 18, as Dr. Patton indicated, during each year, every organization's going to go through an open enrollment period, and part of your open enrollment period is when you actually do what's called a benefit renewal. And what we do for our benefit renewal, we actually have a benefits consultant, Towess Watson, that actually works through the numbers for us, gives us some good options, and helps us really understand what we've done as far as our claims. With respect to our medical plan, in fiscal year 2018, our gross claims are about $13,8 million. Our adjusted net claims was about 13.9. What we also want to actually speak to with that is when we talk about our project, it's because at the time of our renewal, we're still going to have some outstanding claims. You have something which is called an IBNR, which is incurred but not reported claims that have not yet been accounted for with our vendors. And our total projected claims is about $15.8 million. I think one thing that's also good to note with that $15.8 million, about 30% of our total claims paid in 2018 is for prescription benefits.
Now, we're talking about 2018, which is already-
Yes, already ended.
So you're projecting a total of 15.9 for last fiscal year?
Actually, what you do, you use-
Can you go back to the other-
Sure. What you actually do is you look at where your claims cost ended in your previous year, and then what they're actually going, we actually factor in is what are going to be our fixed cost, and we factor in our medical trend, which is about 7.6%, and we come up with our benefit projected claims that we expect we're going to get. We say for-
For that year?
Right, that's for July, from, from July 1st through June 30th of 2018. But I think maybe the confusing part is when we do our benefit plans, we do them on a calendar year.
So that's your projected pay claims for the calendar year?
Actually, no, it's going to be for your fiscal year.
Well, that year's ended?
Yes. But even though we're currently in October, we're still getting, we're still paying some claims that would have been in our previous fiscal year.
All right.
For 2019, our estimated fixed costs is actually going to include our administrative fees. Our administrative fees represent what we pay Optima to administer our health, our health insurance claims. And currently where we are now, we're actually in the last year of a three-year guaranteed rate increase. So when we actually went out to bid about three years ago to look at actually having new vendors, we were actually able to negotiate some administrative fees that actually they guaranteed for three years. So we're actually in our last year. We also, as part of our fixed costs, we offer what's considered our stop-loss premiums. We carry both individual and aggregate stop-loss coverage. Our individual stop-loss coverage actually is something that protects us as a self-insured employer against large claims that might be incurred by a single individual. Under our aggregate, we actually have the same thing, which provides a ceiling as to the annual amount that the city would pay. Anything that pays over, we actually get reimbursed. A lot of people say, "Why would you want to have stop-loss premiums?" You're going to want to protect yourself as a self insurer. We don't have Allstate or anything else that's going to cover those costs, which is also important to note. Currently now, we have about 20 individual claimants that are actually going to exceed $25,000 in our claims costs that we're projecting for next year.
Total?
I'm sorry?
One person or total?
No, 20 individuals. Individuals between active retirees and dependents. To really put, go ahead.
Each will exceed something?
Each will exceed individually $75,000, that's correct. To even really help to understand the importance of our healthcare cost, those 20 individual plans actually account for about $2.4 million of our total healthcare cost.
Just three people. Twenty individuals.
Twenty individuals, yes, ma'am.
So is the health issues or the-
It's health issues. It's one of the reasons why what we're talking about a lot, I mean, it's happened all across the country, it's also going to happen here. We're really focusing on wellness and, you know, people being active, you know, thank you, Ms. Perry. She talked about children being active, getting up. You hear a lot of the programs various organizations have. We're also looking for that as far as our workforce. You know, you have a lot of sedentary jobs, a lot of lifestyle habits that we want to help, you know, counteract in that regards. And then a little bit shorter in my program, I'll speak to some of the programs that we're actually looking to do. Our total estimated cost between our administrative fees and our stop-loss premiums is about $1.3 million. Our projected plan cost for 2019 is actually going to be $17.2 million. That's a difference of about 8% over 2018. Our open enrollment period, as Dr. Patton stated, is going to be from October 29th through November, November 9th. That's going to be for both of all of our benefit-eligible employees and retirees. We're going to-
Excuse me. Can we go back to the last slide? How does that 8% benchmark against similar organizations? Is this a trend that's happening?
It's a trend. We are actually running pretty much consistent with trend. The trend right now is anywhere from about 7.6% to about 12. We're actually, we're actually doing, I mean, pretty good in some respects, so I'll give you that. I gave you that number about those 20 individuals that account for about $2.4 million of our total health costs. If you stop and look at that $2.4 million versus what our estimated costs are, that's actually more than what we'd be looking for as far as an increase. So for example, if those 20 individuals went on our healthcare plans, we'd be very, we'd be very flat for this year.
Is this any factor of Portsmouth being the highest breast cancer rate? Does any of that factor into?
Yes, that is going to factor in. A lot of our high claims costs are really through lifestyle issues, high blood pressure, hypertension, and some various cancers too as well.
The follow-up on what Lisa asked, this cost increase is not related to the cost of aspirin, for example, going from 10 cents to 15 cents?
No, it's not.
It's people getting sick.
Yes. People getting sick.
People getting sick.
People getting sick. And if I may say, the other night, I heard an ambulance in my neighborhood, and naturally if I see, I'm going to put on a coat and walk down there to see, just carrying. And they didn't have to transport anybody, but the paramedics and fire, we just talked for a few minutes. And they just spoke about how much they, and Mr. Clark and I talked about this on Wednesday, how much time that is involved in just calls for the sick. While we are elderly, we are, we are elderly community, but we're having so many young people who are dealing with those issues, which she just mentioned, strokes, heart attacks, hypertension and things of that. And in that conversation, they were just saying, "As we look at budget, Dr. Patton, maybe you can look at a few more amelances because while we have six, we could take four more because people are so sick."
As I said, our open enrollment period is from October 29th through November 9th. We will have our vendors onsite that'll be there to answer questions. We don't have formal meetings, we just kind of have, kind of marketed as, kind of if you have a question, come ask a vendor, sit down and talk to them. We're going to do flexible enrollment options for our active employees. We're going to be utilizing, utilizing Mina Self Service. Basically, you just go online, you can select your benefits. One of the greatest things we do, and Dr. Patton always encourages, to really listen to our customers and make sure you kind of assist them along the way. And one of the things that we heard a lot from our retirees, they prefer the- And one of the things that we heard a lot from our retirees, they prefer the one-on-one service. They would like to sit down with someone, kind of walk them through. They really weren't always interested in doing some of the online enrollments. They really wanted to have some engagement. So we've made time during this two-week span to make sure that we have all of our team members available who can sit down and talk to retirees one-on-one and make sure we thoroughly answer their questions and help them really actually enroll in the benefits of their For our health insurance for 2019, we're actually going to offer three options. We have our existing health maintenance organization, which is called, everybody knows it's referred to as an HMO. One thing I like to say, a lot of times when people think about HMOs, they think about the HMOs that started in the late 80s and the early 1990s. HMOs have evolved over the years. Believe it or not, most of the things, most people say, well, they don't want to do an HMO, is they think about that primary care physician who you had to get permission to if you wanted to go and go see another doctor. The HMO, the referrals, believe it or not, contrary to popular belief, are almost really non-existent, with the exception of some really specialized services. If you might need an MRI or a CAT scan or something like that, you might need some type of authorization. But any type of specialty care for an annual GYN visit or something of that nature, employees are actually free to go and see whomever they want to, as long as they're actually in that network. One of the new plans we're looking to actually also introduce is what is called a high deductible health plan. A high deductible health plan is a health insurance plan with lower premiums and higher deductibles than a traditional health plan. Being covered by a high deductible health plan is also a requirement for having what's called a health savings account. A health savings account allows you to pay for certain medical expenses with money free from federal taxes, so individuals will be able to set aside money, additional money on a pre-tax basis. There are some specific requirements to open and contribute to an HSA. To qualify for a health spending account or an HSA, the IRS requires the following. You must be covered by a qualified high deductible health plan. You must at least be 18 years old. You cannot be enrolled in Medicare. You cannot be claimed as a dependent on someone else's tax returns. And you cannot have a general flexible spending account, either on your own or through a sponsor's plan. So keep in mind, a health spending account is different in regards, as flexible spending account for healthcare, they pretty much do the same thing, but what they actually do is avoid you from double dipping and getting the benefits from actually both. And also, you can't have any other health coverage, including Tri-Care, Virginia benefits, or anything else within the last three months. In addition to that high deductible health plan, we are also, oh, let me also share this, this way everyone else likes to know, the IRS limit for an HSA, the individual for single coverage limit is $3,500. It's $7,000 for family coverage, and if you're age 55 or over, you can actually contribute an additional $1,000 per year as a catch-up contribution to your health savings account. A point-of-service plan, it's not...
Roll over from year to year?
Actually, yes. Health savings accounts, a lot of employers are offering them actually, actually in replacement of offering retiree health insurance, and it's something that you can actually keep with you and take with you. It works a lot differently than a flexible spending account, where you have to kind of use it or lose it, or they'll let you roll some of it over. And actually, what's also different with a health savings account is actually, you actually can grow your money by investing in different investment options too, so there's some good benefits there. Also, we're going to offer what's called a point-of-service plan, which is also referred to as a POS plan. And a point-of-service or POS plan, actually, the best way I describe it, it basically combines the both of an HMO and a PPO in one. So like an HMO, you designate someone as a primary care physician, but like a PPO, you can also go outside of your provider network for healthcare. So that's one of the new things we're actually going to be offering this point-of-service plan, actually in replacement of our preferred provider plan. If you can see this well, now, this is kind of a quick side-by-side of our different plan options that you'll actually see here. The first one, you'll see the core plan, HSA, that's our high deductible plan, and you actually can see your annual deductibles. One thing to keep in mind as this relates, the core high deductible plan, along with the SSA, it actually has an in-network deductible of $2,700 for the individual and $5,200 for family. And all eligible medical expenses are actually covered at 100% once the medical deductible actually has been met. So that's one of the benefits that you'll actually see. The high deductible health plan is actually something that a lot of employers are offering now. It's a good way to also help provide great medical care and also to reduce some of the costs that is actually associated with it as well. All of our plans, as you can see, are going to still have our prescription drug coverage. One thing I will say that I want to do a quick correction of is the asterisk for the traditional point-of-service plan, our select HMO, where you see the asterisk, that speaks to, the asterisk is supposed to represent costs that take place after deductible, but that is not applicable for our point-of-service plan nor for our HMO plan. Those are still going to be your flat $15, $45 copay, your $65 copay, or your 20% max for some of our specialty drugs in that regards. Another great benefit of our point-of-service plan that you'll actually see a little bit different, your primary care, primary physician office visit has a $35 copay, and so does a specialist office visit that actually has a $35 copay. That's a lower copay than we currently offer on our PPO, so there's some benefits there as well. Any questions on the kind of the side-by-side?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Getting to the wellness, some of the wellness programs that we are actually looking to offer, and some of them we actually have, if you've seen some of our promotional through Port City. October, as you know, is Breast Cancer Wellness Month, and we actually had a mammogram ban at Social Services to actually provide mammograms to any of our city employees, and also some of our citizens. Some of our citizens actually took part in that. It's a great way to actually look out for your health. Also, on October 15th, we offered some biometric health screenings, and what we kind of did with that was feature, kind of know your numbers, the importance of knowing your numbers for your blood pressure, your cholesterol, your diabetes risk, your body max and decks, also known as your BMI, tobacco succession, and also regular activity. In addition, we also sponsored, some of you have actually met Cortland Mariner, who is our wellness coordinator, and we actually started doing some of our walking talks with the city manager. Those have been a really great hit. We've gotten a lot of good participation. The one good thing about our walks and talks with the city manager, it also fosters the importance of walking and good health, also having some time to talk with your city manager of some of the things. One of our last ones, I think our second one that we had, we actually congregate down on the plaza. We have some other music to kind of get employees coming, and we also do some giveaways. We actually encountered two new residents that came over. They wondered what we were doing. They had just come to the city, and I thought was really great stewardship to talk about our city, for them to see us, to see our city manager and all the employees out there actually walking and everything. And one of our, also in one of our third ones, we actually had a resident, she was present, and she actually walked along with us. She had her cane, and she walked, she said she didn't walk the whole way, but she walked enough to show her initiative. So we had some great times there. Also, with workplace wellness, we're really looking to really foster kind of that work-life balance that you talk about. We're doing some, proposing doing some different seminars to talk about workplace wellness, stress management, promoting healthy lifestyles, making sure employees understand the benefits of what you're eating at lunch, you know, eating your fruits and grains and getting your appropriate numbers. We're also looking at some initiatives to do some onsite yoga, to do some things, maybe just 30 minutes, get people relaxed. And one of the newest things, I'm not sure if Feenbaker's has started doing it yet, but we're looking at proposing doing some workplace meditation, just some quiet time, you know, 15, 20 minutes.
It's not sleeping at your desk.
No, it's not, no, no, no.
No, you do not sleep.
No, we're going to have it in various places, but basically really just relax, have some aromatherapy, you know, some teas, just some time, just some quiet times, but there'll be no sleeping or anything else in that regards. No worries about no... Madam Clerk, you can't come and get napping off. Also, with our workplace wellness programs, we have a proposal for 2019. We want to really look back at actually doing smoking cessation program. We'd come back before, and we talked about doing a no tobacco use for sworn public safety employees. This proposed policy would bring the city in alignment with our surrounding cities who have similar policies in place. And most people say, well, why would you have a smoking cessation or kind of a no tobacco use for public safety? There actually a really good historical background for this. To provide some background, Virginia enacted the Heart and Lung Presumption in 1976. It's designed to help police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and other emergency first responders overcome the trouble they may have, proving that their diagnosed heart disease, hypertension, lung disease, or pulmonary condition is related to their employment. The current law presumes, unless the employer can find another reason for the occupational disease and or illness, it is presumed that the job actually caused the condition. This policy will actually aid our public safety employees in providing, improving their related heart-lung presumption claims that would be related to their employment by eliminating any use of tobacco. Currently, our third-party administrator, any type of presumption claim is something that they're going to want to look at, we're going to want to make sure. And we really want to kind of lift up our public safety employees and actually provide them with that additional benefit they would get from not having any tobacco use. One thing I would say, as far as our current employees, they would actually be grandfather, that's typically what you would do when you actually propose to do something like this. But what we're also going to have for anyone, and this is for any city employee, and we do have a smoking cessation program through our Optima EAP, we actually put that on as a rider, so we do have that for anyone who's actually interested. As it relates to the workers' compensation presumption statute, I thought it might give some good information, just to tell you, as far as our claims paid from 1980 to present, that was as far back as we were able to actually go, we've paid a little bit over $8.3 million in presumption claims for our public safety employees. One of the greatest things, as we say, we talk about wellness, we've been able to actually do this, offer some fitness center memberships. One thing that I will say is when we actually put out our RFPs, we first met with the Y of Southampton Roads, what they shared with us was if we actually, and we proposed, we're kind of in the contract stage with them, that by offering our fitness center memberships, their fitness center memberships through payroll deductions, we would be one of the first cities on the South Side to actually offer that benefit to our city employees through a payroll deduction. They are going to give us a discounted rate. They'll also have the other various programs they have, the health and wellness, we'll have fitness classes, they also have childcare and summer camps. In addition to the Y of Southampton Roads, and before I get off of that, one of the things we also found out was in March of 2018, the Portsmouth Y actually joined with the Southampton YMCA's. So our employees would be able to actually go to anyone. And one of the things that we got from a lot of employees, you'd be surprised the amount of people who actually have Y memberships, but that's one of the things they started talking to us about last year, I had people saying, Libby, you know, can you get the Y? Can we get the memberships? So we'll be proud to say for 2019 that we actually have that at a discounted rate. We'll also be able to also offer One Life Fitness. Again, that's a national, excuse me, national company. In addition to their regular fitness, you know, they have swimming pools, the same thing as the Y's. They'll also have Pilates, yoga, bar classes, personal training, both Y and One Life Fitness offer personal training. One Life has kids club, as well as the Y has a childcare and summer camps. So we're really pleased to be able to offer that. I think our employees are going to be excited, and it's really going to foster the importance of our employees getting out there, walking and moving. That was the last part of my presentation. Are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Question. When we were talking at the beginning of your presentation, you were talking about the total claims paid out, you said a large percentage of those were because of prescriptions?
Yes, sir.
I know a year ago, we had had a discussion about possibly looking into a nonprofit pharmacy for the city employees. Have we gotten anywhere further on that or any more information?
We've gotten a little bit closer. I think some of what we're going to need to do is actually find an actual location to actually house that. So we have done some, we have talked a little bit more with Chesapeake. I probably should have some greater updates probably the next, maybe three, maybe 30, 90 days.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, members of council, the city attorney and I, in working with the Hampton Roads Community Health Center, who is proposing to build a health center that will have a pharmacy, we talked with Mrs. Willis about the city joining with them and having some kind of program, collective program, that our employees could get their prescriptions filled at some kind of cost. But right now, that's, as you all are aware, is on hold until they determine who their, they have who their new developer is going to be for the health center, but we've started that conversation. We did talk with Chesapeake in regard to theirs, but we would, they couldn't join, we couldn't join theirs, we would have to develop our own.
And if I could also add on top of that, Dr. Patton, one of the things we're doing, again, is when we go out to bid next year for our vendors and everything, because it'll be time for us to do so, one of the things that Willis Towers wanted us, actually, they wanted us to talk about was actually doing a carve-out for pharmacy. That's right in line with what you've asked us to look into.
What's the average cost in comparison for the average employee on their health coverage for the coming year?
The average cost?
Yeah, increase.
The average increase? I would tell you the average increase, the majority of our employees are in about 781 or 82, or in the HMO and employee-only coverage, that's where we have the most of them. The monthly increase, again, this is monthly, is about $3.32, so about a dollar fifty, a little bit less than a dollar fifty per pay period.
So last, the last few years?
Last and last prior years. We've actually been able to, through some plan design changes, to actually get the increases down. What we wanted to focus on was a way to lower the out-of-pocket cost for our employees without increasing it pretty much in other areas. Some of the ways that we actually did that was really looking at our deductible. Some of our plans, we increased the deductible, because the deductible only comes into play if you're going to go inpatient or if you're going to go to the emergency room. So it won't be anything to prevent our employees, you know, something's going, they need to go see their physician or go see a specialist, they'll still have their actual copays. In addition, our costs for vision, there's no change. We're in the final year of a three-year rate guarantee. Our dental plans, there's actually no cost there for our EPO, that was going to be at no cost. The PPO, where we have the majority of our employees and retirees, there was about a 5% increase, but that only amounted to about $10,000, and we were able to find money there to keep that flat. So we're really looking out as it relates to of our retirees or active employees and the money coming out of their paychecks.
Very good.
Thank you.
Was any of the costs being decreased as a result of the Medicaid expansion, and also was Anthem considered to be one of the providers in this area who was coming on as a new provider with Optima?
Sure. With Medicare expansion, not so much of an impact as it relates to Anthem, when we go out to bid next year, and we'll do that early part of this year, we'll be going out casting a wider net, so we'll probably get some Anthems and some of the other insurance companies to actually come in and see what they can offer to do something very competitive.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, I'll challenge it, we've been working now since, actually, late August, September, is outreach to the possible, although the state says 4,000 citizens in Portsmouth are not a part of Medicaid. Our estimate is more like 6,000, and so we've been sending you updates on how, Social Services, how they will be staffing, starting January 1, to try to get every possible citizen that is in our net to be covered. That will help us tremendously, not only with their healthcare, but with our hospitals too, of people who don't have any covered.
Good.
We'll have Mr. Daniel Jones to come, you all asked for continuing.
Let's do this, let's take a two-minute stretch.
Okay.
Back in session.
Yes. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. As requested, our presentation this evening will focus on the RFP proposal scheduling and the next steps for the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network project. The overview of the presentation this evening will be the proposal review scheduling and our recommended next steps. The internal review committee, which from previous presentation, is the City of Portsmouth Internal Departments, Federal Engineering, and Magellan Advisors. The review committee identified the top proposals, and those vendors will be onsite, actually, Wednesday to present their proposals. And then our next steps would be if those two proposals, or one of those proposals, met what the internal committee would deem as the next step, we would move forward with the agreements, contracting, things of that nature. If not, then we would go down the list of proposals. As well, once we do the award notification, project kicked off, and then construction commencement. If you have any questions?
Refresh me on how long this is, if you started tomorrow?
The entire network construction? It is laid out to be a five-year or five fates. Of course, it can be done quicker, this is a matter of funding and allocation.
This is or is not the public-private partnership?
This is the RFP that was structured as a PPEA, but there is, with these proposals, no element of a PPEA. This is contingent upon City Council.
Well, again, as we discussed in the last meeting, council wants to do a side-by-side comparison between public-private partnership and just doing it ourselves with cash.
Was there, there was, oh, I'm sorry.
And I think, if you recall the last presentation, I don't think, I don't think, but one proposal had any kind of financing offered as an option. All of the rest were straight cash. City paid, so that, in that respect, I believe there were five or six proposals, only one had a financing option on it.
I think council is concerned with the question, and you guys chime in, you guys and ladies, what's the benefit of having a partner versus doing it ourselves?
I thought we decided at the last meeting.
I thought it already did.
Right.
We are doing that.
That's what you got, right?
Is that doing it ourselves?
Yes.
It is, but we, these are partners.
Those two proposals are, or would be funded with city budgetary funds. They would maintain control operation.
May I have missed out my question, and I asked at the beginning, was, is this with or without the P3?
Those two proposals are without.
Without.
What I mentioned is there was one proposal submitted that had a TTEA option, but they were not allowed.
They weren't allowed.
You're just confusing me.
I'm sorry.
When we say we do, we talking about construction operations or?
Just like in building a building, we decide to do it. We design it and put it out for bid, and we pick the little bidder and do it.
That's what they're doing. That's what this is.
I just wanted to show it.
But the bidder doesn't become a partner.
Right. That's right. Not at all.
Because when you say we do, that means, you know, we got to have people.
They're digging a hole, they're putting the stuff in, we're having them attack.
Yeah, and not me.
Okay.
There goes.
We're good, man.
Just remember that.
Just a question about the review, the review committee, essence of City of Portsmouth, Federal Engineering and Magellan Advisors?
The internal committee is made up of Information Technology and Procurement. Federal Engineering is a nationwide engineering firm, and Magellan Advisors is a nationwide marketing consulting firm.
Doing the phase in, Daniel, it, I mean, you'll be able to use it during the phase in. It'll just be complete, completed at the end of approximately five-year period?
Right. As we begin to connect sites, we will turn those sites over, and then we'll disconnect the existing service.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mr. Jones. Members of council, Mr. Baldwin will come now and share with you briefly something for your consideration for the Building 1 Portsmouth.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I will be brief. Just want to give you an update where we are with our conference of plan. This is scheduled to come before City Council for public hearing November the 13th. The Planning Commission has completed their work and will be forwarding the plan to City Council again for public hearing and for action. Just want to point out, the Planning Commission had the plan open for public hearing for the months of September and October. During the time that draft plan was being reviewed, we received comments from VDOT and from DEQ, which were, you know, state agency reviews, which, as we've shown here, we've been accommodating their review comments. The last one came up as the one public inquiry, the one decision we'll need City Council to make for us in November. It was a request that came from Cavalier Manor Civic League. I think this property people are familiar with, this is 4358 Greenwood Drive, this was the former site of Bonneville. And you see in the graphic on the left, you'll see the site is all shown in brown, that is our multifamily designation from the 2005 Conference of Plan. That site was shown as multifamily. Of course, at that time, the plan was done, the Bonneville project still existed on site, and that's the Charlestown, what was it, Charlestown condominiums, just to the west of that. So that was all shown as multifamily. During the course of the plan review, the Cavalier Manor Civic League submitted a request that that area at 4358 Greenwood, which is in that Bonneville site, be re-designated and the future land use map to single-family detached, which is the yellow color you'll see across the street, across Greenwood and adjacent to the property on the east. We discussed this concept with the Planning Commission at their meeting in October, and there's, as you see on the graphic on the right, you'll see it's sort of a more peach color, kind of a white color. The ultimate determination made by the Planning Commission was to show that as really a mixed-use designation. Instead of picking multifamily or single-family, that's a mixed-use designation. One of the reasons taking, it's like you've got multifamily on one side, you've got single-family on the other side, and that mixed use, you'd have the ability. Again, we're just talking land planning, we're not talking about rezoning, land planning context, to accommodate a project that would blend in there. So in essence, in front of council at your meeting in November, you'll have basically three alternatives to look at. You can leave it as is from the 2005, leave it as multifamily. The second option would be to go along with what the Planning Commission and staff discussed in October, which is that mixed-use designation. Obviously, the third one is with the Cavalier Manor Civic League requested, and that would show it in yellow, and that would be to show it as single-family detached residential. So those are really the three options. That's the one remaining question that we have as far as the Conference of Plan is concerned, coming for City Council, which the issues have not been resolved by the Planning Commission. With finality, this is clearly a City Council decision on this one. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
So that's going to come for us, for a vote for single-family, mixed-use, or multi?
Yeah, we would advise you at your public hearing in November, that this land use question is still undecided. We'd ask City Council, so we can finish, and the plan can have a finished future land use map, so we get a final designation for that, for that area.
Does council want to discuss that? Those, it's really three options, not two there. Do you want to discuss now your first reaction to three?
That would help.
Sure. All right. I'll break the ice. Why not go with the request to the Civic League? We encourage Civic Leagues to participate and be active and hear their voice.
I agree. I mean, it's going to be their community, what they want to see, you know, they're going to ride by it more times than we do, than anyone else, so it's my community too.
I think the community should weigh in on it, understand the Civic League already has, and that was single-family, so I support that. Right.
Well, I'm, I'm, I gotta refer to the city attorney on this, because I'm the president of the Civic League, and I submitted it.
For the group, for the community.
There's a message here.
On behalf of the Civic League, after the Civic League voted.
Of Rock and Asha. All right. That's Nathan.
Yeah, I agree. I'm all for, you know, supporting the Civic League there and what's going on. I guess my only question is, is the Planning Commission, you know, they're saying mixed residential, you know, why would they not be happy with the, with the single-family?
If I can answer your question, as we explained to the Planning Commission, it's one of those unusual land use circumstances. You have three options, they're all good. There's really no wrong decision here. We just had, we looked at this, just multifamily, single-family, what's in the middle? And in the discussion with the Planning Commission, we suggested maybe that's a transition zone as mixed use. However, because of the fact you've got multifamily on one side, you're surrounded by single-family, you really don't have what we would call a wrong answer to the question.
But it's your decision.
I was going to say, if the street structure was a little different, I would say the mixed residential makes more sense, so you really could transition, but because of the way the streets are, I think I'm with my colleagues, it might as well go back to single-family like the neighborhood wants anyway. I mean, whether, whether the breakpoint is on this road or this road, really don't make any difference. And if that's what they want, I'm fine with that.
Well, the consensus among council is that it go single-family, that it go yellow.
Yes.
What action do we need to take other than a consensus?
What do we need, what do we need to do?
Well, it'll be part of the.
Right, it'll be part of, it'll be the presentation made on November 13th. We would just ask at whatever point, if you do it on the 13th, of course, which we would love to see, if there's a recommendation to approve the Conference of Plan, that would include the designation of the property as shown here as single-family.
Please then put three options up.
We'll do that.
Visually, the public can see.
All right. Okay, Mary, finish with that?
Yes.
We have one more update.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, in accordance with City Council's ordinance 2018-96 and 2018-99, the school board has provided the funds for several re-appropriations subsequent to that funding coming forward. Staff members have had at least one sit-down with school board, staff, administrations, and in that discussion, certain issues have come up, and I'll let Dr. Patton speak to those.
Right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, on last Thursday, we met with, the city's financial team, met with the school's financial team, and I've received, during that meeting, we discussed their payment schedule, and for them to determine what is their best payment schedule. During the budget process in 2019, as you know, I shared with Dr. Bracy, here's the schedule we've always had. He concurred, and that was adopted through resolution in the, in the budget process. But Dr. Bracy officially sent a memorandum this morning, FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools' payment schedule. As a follow-up to our conversation on Friday, October the 19th, 2018, I'm respectfully requesting that the payment of funds to the school division for the city be moved to the first of each month. If you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. With that request, under, in talking with city attorney, tomorrow night, under items submitted by council, the city attorney has prepared a resolution of which we're asking a council member to bring that up, council to vote on that resolution. And then, once that resolution is adopted, then on the next day, which will be the 24th, we will be able to move over to the schools their October payment.
All we're basically doing is being from the first, from the end of the month to the first of the month.
It does not affect anything.
So they get a payment on October the 24th, and then they'll get a payment on November 1st.
On November 1st, that's right.
Yeah, we need to accommodate that.
And you're fine with it?
We're fine, we're all fine. In fact, we kind of recommend.
The reason why we're doing it by resolution, because we said it by resolution.
That's exactly right, and they know that.
I guess you problem with that?
No.
All right, that'll come tomorrow night. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, that concludes tonight's presentation.
My colleagues, thanks for your participation, and Ray's right, there's no dumb question for this, and I know you were talking, but this was a very rich discussion, and I think it was productive from the very start.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.